... with Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, in the title of the Public Meetings Act. Advocate notice in this meeting has been provided, specified in the act. Proper notice in this meeting was provided in the notice of September 16th, 2011. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board Education offices, mailed to the number seven, excuse me, Star Ledger, North Jersey Herald News, and the Left Journal, mailed to the number County Club, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for election.
Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This is school room.
This is Dave Jack Martin, here. Ms. Flynn, here. Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Dr. E?
Here.
Mr. Rogers? Mrs. Russo, here. Mrs. Scarama?
Here.
Mrs. Zada?
Here.
Mr. Cooker?
Here.
Approval of admittance, approval of admittance as the shooting. Oh, you want me to move? Okay, I'd like to move the admittance as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Admittance approved. Superintendents report.
Thank you, Mr. Cooker. It's been an exciting September. The district is certainly buzzing with activity. This past weekend, we had homecoming, prayed to cook out the game, what was, in my opinion, a banner day. I do want to thank our culinary arts staff at the high school, as well as the class of sixty-one, I hope you had a wonderful day, and especially all the volunteers who made the day possible, from community members to faculty, staff, and students who volunteer their time so that we eat and celebrate and have a wonderful time. We've had multiple school dances over the past couple of weeks, as well as athletic competitions. I had the opportunity to, albeit briefly, but visit with the girls tennis team when they were competing in the county tournament, and again, they conducted themselves exactly as you would hope students from this township would. We've had visitors to the district over the past couple of weeks, including Johnny Damon and Representative Pastor Ellen, Senator Bob Mendez. Each visit provided a unique learning experience for our students, as well as for the faculty and staff. Thanks to all the community members, as well as our administrators who helped put this together, and certainly to distinguished guests for giving them their time to enhance learning and engagement of our students. Superintendent Advisory Council met for the first time, they meet every month, or will meet every month, with members of our faculty from each building. We meet to communicate priorities, to create dialogue regarding the effective work at the building level, so that they can communicate with me what's going on, and I can communicate with them. It was a very collaborative conversation. Our Director of Instruction was with me. These meetings, I look at these meetings as a critical part of our efforts to work as one district team, and as they occur each month, I'll make sure we go out to the board. We're meeting again tomorrow, this will be the third meeting of our evaluation leadership team. Again, as we move forward with our common language for professional practice, we have this leadership team which helps to kind of guide collaboratively the work across the district. We have teachers, coordinators, administrators, both from the building level and from the central office. The team, focus of the work coming up tomorrow will be our articulation day on October 3rd. Definitely want to thank all the administrators, the EAM, and certainly the faculty for their time and work. It is a challenging conversation, and one that everyone seems to want to engage in, which is certainly positive for us. Strategic planning continues. I've been in touch with a number of potential facilitators that will help us engage all the stakeholders as we move through this year, the goal of course being building a vision and mission that we can actually use to measure the progress of the district, as well as as a framework to base these critical decisions, albeit budget or staff, as we move forward. I did want to take this opportunity to restate that in my three months, building relationships has been the primary goal, and continues to be that way. Three months, and I think we've accomplished a great deal when it comes to structure, but we certainly need to keep producing when it comes to communicating substance. I do want to invite all of our stakeholders, community, as well as faculty, staff, students, and the rest, everyone. That's important to be patient and open-minded as we continue to work through this, but also to contact us. We're beginning to leverage the website, but still building our approach. I do want to make sure that when we finally roll out the website in its entirety, that it's not only effective, but it's for the long term. I don't want to click fix solution when it comes to communication. I've had a number of conversations, as people have contacted me, either through email or via the phone. They've all ended positively. I've been at PTA meetings and tried to engage the public whenever possible, why I'm using my voice, but I do want to just restate that fact that if something's going on, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Our Director of Instruction, who joins us this evening, has been around the district, means that we gained classrooms. She's been holding a number of meetings, has met with groups of life instructors, as well as attended county roundtables, where of course, it's interesting to note, the county is pushing common language. So we're a little ahead of the curve there. You'll notice again, for this agenda, there have been changes in the format. We changed the format to match our new committee structure. This demonstrates a continued flow of board business, hopefully through the appropriate committee and then up to a specific section of the board agenda, trying to ensure greater communication with board members, and more consistent communication to the community. As we move through this transition to a new structure and new format, there are going to be things that appear, such as this agenda, where we're approving work that has already been inspired. That has been part of practice here, which is one of the reasons we are changing this. It will continue to happen for the next couple of months in certain circumstances that are unavoidable, but again, our goal is the eighty-ninety rule. We want eighty-nine percent of what we see in the board agenda to have got the appropriate committee and the appropriate discussions before this is the agenda, and all work indicating both to the board or serving to the administration must be approved by the board before the board commences, so that you know exactly what its intentions are, what the goals are, how to be measured, and what it requires. So we're moving forward in that respect. I do want to comment on a couple of things that have taken place over the past two weeks. First is just an update on our pay to participate. It's a new board policy that we've been working both with the business office and the athletic office to ensure we meet the policy. We've been communicating with parents in the community as much as possible, and leverage the website to do this as well. We did mention initial rollout, that the deadline will be later during this season, and it will be moving forward to try and accommodate everyone's transition into the program. That being said, the deadline for payment is this Friday. Reminder notices were sent out via mail and email to all parents and students who have yet to pay. I've communicated with the athletic office and with every coach. Our response actually has been positive. I've had people contact me via mail and email in certain situations, and as always, I'm not willing to keep those things private, but we've been able to work out something that's amenable to everyone and still meet the pay to participate policy. So in that respect, we'll have more reports moving forward. A second round of reminder letters will go out on Thursday, but as of Friday, when we finalize those who have paid and those who have not, this will go out to coaches and students, unfortunately, until that's taken care of, we'll not be able to participate. The hope is at that point, we've worked out all of the individual situations, and that all of our students can still enjoy all the benefits that come with participating in our athletic program. I also want to comment on the lockdown at the high school. This past Friday, trying to communicate, and again, I've been saying that we are about communication, emails went home to the parents of all the high school students directly. We also posted a similar message on the website, and that message is still pretty much the same. There was a security concern. We locked down the building for the safety of our students. We investigated the concern, and when the building was deemed to be completely safe, we came out of lockdown. It was truly only a matter of minutes. The staff, the students, the administrators, all acted responsibly and appropriately during the time. There were no issues. However, moving forward beyond the school district, we've been cooperating with the police department. There's an ongoing investigation, and because of that, I cannot unfortunately give any more specifics about that at this time. However, I continue to work with the police department, and at such time as I can give specifics, I will certainly not only through email, but in message to the board, and certainly on the website again, release any and all details that we can. So I do appreciate people's willingness to allow the process to continue unfold. Please understand that our number one priority is the security and safety of all the people that are on our property. Students can't learn, and teachers can't teach unless everyone's safe, so we're certainly committed to doing, to making sure that that continues. I have expressed my gratitude publicly before for the cooperation of the police department. Their coordination, cooperation have made so far, everything work as well as I think can be expected, and I'm certainly proud of how our administrators, faculty, and staff, and certainly our students have behaved through the entire thing. Should you have questions about this, I've had people contact me via email and by phone. I have responded to every single message that I have received. They have been good conversations. The community really, many times, have just the wrong iteration of what's been on the website, and sometimes it's better here in person. I have responded to every single message that I know of that I have received via email, email or via phone. Some people I talked to multiple times, but we're here, sir, and please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns you might have. Finally, on the most positive note, I've had the opportunity to work with a number of different groups of students, been in classrooms, working with teachers, everything from sitting on the floor at kindergarten, first grade level, to debating with some of our middle schoolers. This morning, I've worked with Greater Nation Intelligence, and Mr. Kelly there, thanks to him and his students, they were great, and they grilled me, felt like I was a professional student. As well as last week, I got to work with a number of writers from the school newspaper. This is certainly the most challenging and interesting work that I get to engaging, still the best part of the job, challenging students, being challenged by them. I look forward to continuing, certainly that aspect of the job that I've had so far these last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. There'll be a new board secretary in court. Mrs. Yen is out ill this evening. Committee reports. Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cooker, thank you. With the new format that the superintendent set up with us, we had our first administration committee meeting, and briefly, and we're going to spend more time obviously, talked about issues that are coming out of the committee, but we, first of all, I want to thank my committee members, Steve Rogers and Fred Scholera. It's refreshing, it's refreshing to work with professionals that have a difference of opinion, but we end up on the same, we start out on the same page, and hopefully we end up in the same book or close to it anyway. But the committee system that we've set up is going to be interesting. I think it's going to save us a, or make our job clearer as far as to other board members are concerned and to the public. At our first administration meeting, we discussed the solar panels that we are looking at, and we're going to spend a lot more time discussing, but we're getting some input on PPA proposal on soldiers, and again, we probably will be looking at RFP in the near future, once we do some more research on it. We spent quite a bit of time talking about that. We talked about the CUSAC report that we are going to have to be diligent on this year. We discussed uniforms as part of our agenda, and we know is something that's been discussed in the past, but our committee is going to be looking into that. We also discussed policy reviews. There's still some policies that we need to update, and this committee is going to be a part of that, and it was a good positive meeting, and I think the format, the agenda, thanks to the superintendent, is well put together, and it's going to be productive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, Mr. Kaczynski's comments, that certainly, I do agree that the structure has been in vogue in terms of moving this process forward. The academic committee met on September 13th, and we had a very productive conversation regarding a variety of academic issues impacting the district. We discussed the superintendent's merit goals. We received the superintendent's merit goals. We reviewed them, which are part of Mr. Lazvik's contract. These goals were also reviewed by the county superintendent, Dr. Feinstein. It's important to note that these goals are part of a broader conversation that Mr. Lazvik had with full board during our Board of Chief this past July. There are five goals in total. Three quantitative goals, which are empirically driven, that will focus on student performance, as well as two qualitative goals, which are process-driven, and this will focus on the strategic planning effort, as well as a new teacher assessment model. I'm sure that Mr. Lazvik will have an opportunity at subsequent board meetings to review these goals with the broader community, and I truly believe it's an opportunity to move this district forward. We also discussed the expectations for committee members. Again, this is an opportunity to help facilitate the lines of communication between the community and the school district. In regards to the committee structure, as Mr. Kaczynski discussed, it's an opportunity for the committee chairs to serve as a conduit in terms of us receiving that information, and then us taking that information from our fellow board members, as well as the community, and bringing that back to the administration for hopefully, an immediate response. Regarding the academic goals for 2012, Ms. Valani probed us pretty extensively during our meeting regarding how we wanted to, or what Ms. Russo and I saw as some of the direction that the district needs to take in the coming year. Again, parents have been pleading for this for years in terms of an increase or increasing the use of technology, but more so in the opportunity of using it for information forms, calendars, and registration, and providing an online portal of parental access to address some of these concerns. The issue of online report cards, we've moved towards this issue with the high school level. We want to bring that back to the elementary school levels, of course, website updates, and also infusing technology with instruction. And it begs the question, and I know this is an issue that has been brought up in various PTOs, should we be purchasing smart boards, which essentially become glorified white boards where teachers end up writing on and ruining? Or should we, again, begin to look at more innovative ways of embracing that technology? Should we be buying more iPad's for that matter? Mrs. Zada's four one, my last one, we want to showcase that. So regarding better communication, we want to improve communication to parents, as well as PTOs, and community members on issues related to academics. For instance, this past week, there was some controversy over our final exam policy at the high school, and I think Principal Barry did an excellent job in addressing his parents' concerns, and it was an opportunity for us to, not to explain to parents, are we being too extreme, is putting things in their proper perspective? And I can recall from my college years, as well as graduate school, I cannot recall ever having a final exam waived, so I feel that we would be providing our students and our children an injustice by waiving these requirements, which will benefit them once they reach their pinnacle years in terms of education. So that's something that we discussed. Let me see, what else we addressed? Curriculum and instruction. This current year, Ms. Valani was to be spearheading a K through twelve program review, and that will dovetail nicely into our strategic planning efforts as far as this comprehensive needs assessment, which we so desperately need for our district. And again, it's an opportunity for us to examine best practices in terms of pedagogy, and it will dovetail nicely in terms of our other planning efforts. Additionally, the committee reviewed a list of priority areas which we'll be addressing in greater detail at subsequent meetings, issues pertaining to, again, in no particular order, test boards. It's a big, you know, that's something that Superintendent Lazvik will hit head-on regarding his goals in terms of student performance for the district, but we're looking at structural changes. We're looking at the broader picture in terms of where can we make sweeping decisions to at least address this issue. In terms of instructional strategies, we talked about professional learning communities, articulation meetings, best practices, again, infusing technology into classrooms, is a recurring theme throughout our discussion, and of course, we want to embrace a data-driven approach, both quantitative and qualitative data to inform instructional practices. And for example, I heard this time and time again when I was QBD member last year, it's our special, like kids that are bringing us down with our own test scores, and it was Superintendent Lazvik that actually dispelled this myth and exposed this fallacy by doing his own analysis, showing the, showing board members that it's not the special ed children that are bringing us down, that it's a question that we may have to improve our instructional capabilities in the classroom, so I commend him for at least shedding some light in that important area. Now last but not least, it's this idea of sharing a common vision, to use your language as it is in Lazvik, as well as a common vision, and how can we embrace a common vision that will help make our students more successful? And this idea of culture, which I've had this conversation with a few community members, and it becomes this idea of a cancer of mediocrity in terms of this textbook they introduced to a good degree. Are we too accepting of complacency? And how can we begin to capitalize on successful programs within the classrooms, or at least within the high school itself? Look at our music program touted as among nationally recognized best programs in the country. How can we utilize, leverage this model for success, and apply that to the classroom, and at least have the same honor to recognize our academic programs in the same way to say that it at least does have some of the best academic programs in the entire country? And we also talk about a common language, and this will certainly help support the goals as outlined by Mr. Lazvik. We want to keep these lines of communication open, and that will be done by the administration, inviting them to these various board meetings, and have them discuss the best practices that they're doing in the classroom, so we want to embrace those ideas and at least help facilitate that process. And that was about it.
Thank you, Attorney. The finance committee met on September 14th. I chair the finance committee. We also raised the committee structure. Topics during that meeting included the budget review for the 2010-2011 budget year. The auditors recovered in and going over the books, and when they continue working, will know exactly when we wound up the year, but we did review the expenditures and the, so that we are on the positive side with respect to that budget year. 2011, 2012 is a tight budget year, and we'll be reviewing it monthly to ensure that we are on budget during this particular year. We took that operational review, which is really a recasting of our expenditures, the non-academic ones in particular, to see how much we spend on various activities, and then we can then use that as a basis for how we can improve our services and reduce costs, and also, it is in my mind, that's something that's necessary as we go into the share, to try to share services with the town, to see where there are opportunities to actually reduce costs. So you have to understand your cost basis to do that. We reviewed the additional state aid for the current year, and in the agenda, it is a agenda item, one of the resolution number nine under finance, is how we're going to distribute that money that was additional in state aid. It is moving to the county superintendent October 15th. Then to discuss the 2012-2013 budget process, and we're going to go about doing that, and we also discussed some of the impacts that are on that budget that we have to take into account, such as health premium that we prefer for the current year, the impact of health contributions, vehicle replacements, and some of the OFACS findings. And then the final topic on the agenda was our schedule of meetings, to set a standing meeting for each month as the year progresses. Finance Committee report. We now come to a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed on tonight's agenda. Board regulations, about twenty minutes for these communications. This portion shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all those others wishing to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. For the first person wishing to speak, please step forward. Resolution I goes on.
I don't know Stephen Hahn's resolutions. I didn't read through your whole agenda, but I am here to talk about school uniforms. Are you telling me that I can't speak about them?
Not right now. There's another portion of the meeting where bill matters can be discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Beaming Mr. President Allen Thomas, 108 McKinley Street. Mr. President, I have several questions regarding finance committee resolution number one, which is the listing of bills. And the first question, President, is just generally, why are some of the capital improvement bill pay the subject of their own resolutions, such as finance resolutions 12 through 15, but not others? For example, Epic Construction Management is listed on the list of the bills, and is not subject to a separate resolution. I thought, you know, the thing, OFAC hit us on a couple, year or two ago, that all expenditures from capital accounts have to be approved by the board with identification of specific account in which the funds are being drawn, and by account, that means which referending money is being paid for.
That the accounts are on the ones that you cited that were separate.
Yes, yes, they are, exactly.
The accounts are on.
Yes, they are, on those.
Separately identified.
Yes, but the one for Epic is, like I said, is listed on the, just on the regular bills. Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, page one of mine.
And you'll have to get back to that.
I add to that, Mr. President, that there are other bills on the list that look construction-related. I don't know whether they are or not, which is Panetta Industrial Automation, Metropolitan Engineering, and a few others that may be asked the same question.
We'll get back to that.
Will the board be deleting those from the bill payment list tonight to have any further investigation?
No.
Okay. Like I said, the OFAC has already hit us on the head for not approving the payment properly, while we would go ahead and possibly, even possibly approve it in process, and I don't understand this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish beer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also see a bill list payment to the Terranova group. Are we still using Terranova tests? Is that what that's for?
Yes.
I thought once the state standardized the test for everybody, we were going to stop using other tests. Is that not right? If not, then why not? I mean, I'm sure there's a sound educational reason, I'd like to know what it is.
State requires me to test at every grade level, but the state only tests at certain grade levels, so we're required to fill in the blanks. The other issue, we use the Terranova at certain grade levels for a separate form of assessment for individual students. So you have all grade levels, as well, and we also use the thirty pass at certain grade levels for the same thing.
What grade levels are given the standardized test?
The state tests at three through eight and eleven.
Right.
So we're required to test at the other levels.
So the Terranova is for nine, ten, and twelve?
For one, two, et cetera.
And what individualized, did you give me a little more information on that? I said that because when my son was in the school, my son's teachers had no idea what the Terranova test was like.
Depending on individual students he needs, we might give a separate set of assessments to see where they fall grade level, that percentiles, they manage the rest. Because it's a national, a national test, we can use that assessment to get down like that for things like, I don't know.
What level of the Terranova test should we use?
Use the market. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry?
What level of Terranova test do we use?
Depends on, we use Terranova tests at the untested test levels for short, but then K-12, depending on whether you get to assess a student.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else wish beer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, Melissa Bills is a, is a payment to Bob Jones University Press for almost ten thousand dollars. She was almost thirteen thousand dollars. And I'm wondering what books we purchased from Bob Jones University Press, and what courses for, or if it's not books, what program, or what do we spend thirteen thousand dollars Bob Jones University Press for?
We'll get back to that.
And may I, again, request that that payment for that be deleted from the payment for that investigation? I would be asking the same question.
One of the, one of the problems is that our, our secretary is not here this evening, and I'm sure she would be able to answer these questions.
One reason why, this question I would, everything would be deleted.
I asked her about that. It's books for Assembly of God. I think that there's idea money that comes to Nutley, and then it goes, we actually have to order the bills through our purchasing contract, and so the money filters through us, so that's why it's on there.
So no, no actual public money is used for this, other than what we get from federal grants?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else wish beer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just curiosity, and the finance resolutions four through eight deal with specialization, and I just wonder why they are not under the academic committee's purview by President's academic resolution number three? And in that regard, I'm wondering if there's a fallout from the ban report we got about our use of IDA funds last year? In other words, we use any money?
Payments generally for plans.
I think that there's idea money that comes to Nutley and then it goes, we actually have to order the bills through our purchasing contract, and so the money filters through us. So that's why it's on there.
So no actual public money is used for this, other than what we get from federal grants?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else wish to vote?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just curiosity, are Finance Resolutions four through eight due with special hesitation? And I just wonder why they are not under the academic committees purviewed by President's Academic Resolution Number Three? And in that regard, I'm wondering if there's a fallout from the ban report we got about our use of IDA funds last year. In other words, do we use any money?
Payments are generally for finance. Payments will generally go through Finance Committee. If they start somewhere else, maybe you can alternate.
And that's the only, that's the only reason?
The other issue is that if it's grant-specific, you know, usually go to academic companies, contract-specific, but all directly financial.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you, Mr. President. Personal Resolution Number Eight, review of Mr. Perry's volunteer cheerleading coach at Rattcliff School. This is a resolution for Mr. Perry to get paid as a cheerleading coach. Whereas last month, on August twenty-ninth, you knew Mr. Perry being a volunteer cheerleading coach. I'm just wondering what happened between August twenty-ninth and now? And something other questions added, was a fit of coaching on budget when we were passing that to April?
There is a coach in the budget. Myoseng is issued paperwork and issues paperwork that had to be processed so that he could be paid officially. The intention, Myoseng is, I can double check, but Myoseng was always should bring him on as a full coach before he became coach. Would stop discussing before the budget actually passed officially. It's just the individual that brought in, who wanted to start right away, as you can see, he'll go perform in the field, his work has certainly helped. We proved him as a volunteer so that he could work officially, and now the paperwork has done what he wants and the way it should and will be.
What paperwork had to be done, could be done before, Mr. President?
I don't know, but I know that in personnel, as they can get different pieces back from the state sometimes in America, substitute certificates and things like that, they can start unofficially. But if he can be paid stipend, sometimes we want to make sure that he's there. There are different levels. We're paying now a paybook stipend, so we're talking about association, negotiated piece. We want to make sure that the person is receiving and still put all their documentation in full-time service, not just substitute.
Can I complicate the coach?
I'm sorry?
Is that that complicated the coach? I don't understand that for history teachers.
It's complicated, however, anyone who wants to pay work, it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, just finished questions?
I have several more, but just one more for now, Mr. President. On the Finance Resolution Number Sixteen, again, I mentioned this at the last meeting, this is for parents not discovered until after some key elements were removed from the high school. Assuming the key elements we're talking about is the old radiators. And again, this just sounds like crazy, you respect preparation or crazy business. When you take out eighty, I mean, I'll reset here. You take eight hundred year old radiators of a thousand year old school building, chances are there's going to be rocket spores and walls around there. And I think that's not rocket science to figure that out. It should have been included in specs in the first place, it should have been the original bits. Should not?
Response would be the same as the last night, with electrical panels where you don't know until you pull it out, similarly, they didn't know for sure, and they're not going to, they're not going to, they're not going to pay for something. If it turns out there is nothing behind, and it's okay, they're not going to give us money back, I'm sure.
Well, certainly, a specification could be written if so-and-so had this.
Thank you for your comment.
Well, again, on the electrical cabinet, just by knowing when the old one was installed would tell you whether it's up to spec or not, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've discussed this enough times and pre this many times.
Well, it continues to be a problem, I know, Mr. Lazovic said, we're going to get more of these in the next couple of months. I look forward to never hearing about it after that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Now close this portion of the meeting. Dr. Reed, do you move the academic resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move Academic Resolutions one through four and state...
Let's go over the question. Discussion.
Mr. President, a question regarding Resolutions Number Three and Four, where you talk about the submission of an application for the IDA funding. I'm just curious, is the process, and what kind of application is filed? Because I know this is an area of our concern, and board members were concerned about this last year, and was interested in some IDA funding. So what's the process?
They release, delayed number, delayed, they release funding to us based on a formula that they determined, and then we have to take that funding and create a plan. We then apply and use the money based on that plan. We give that through the E-Wing system, which is all online. It's extremely cumbersome and detailed. And we have a number of people working on the different things. What we have, the board is required to approve the application. And then they review that, and they let us know what we do with spending money, and eventually when the application is approved, we need to officially accept it.
Any other discussion? Collier, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, on all, I abstain on number two. Who's going to law? Mrs. Calera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazado?
Yes.
Mr. Cookham?
Yes, except for on item number two, the School Board Association intervention.
Was I mistaken from that? I'm not mistaken. Charlie's not mistaken.
Yes, more of this.
I couldn't say anything about the job.
Mr. Kazinsky, we move administrative resolution.
Yes, Mr. President, Administration Resolution Number One.
Second.
Discussion. Collier, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Calera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazado?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kazado, would you move Finance Resolutions?
I'll move Finance Resolutions as written, one to seventeen.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Calera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to state under the new law, which is great, I really love the committee structure, but, just a question, but twelve through seventeen were actually approved at the administrative committee, all the contracted things. We spoke and approved them in the administration committee, and under the finance. Will they be under finance all the time after we approve the administration, or should they form an administration?
These were, these specific actually were on the administration agenda we talked about.
We did discuss it.
Exactly, but they actually appeared in resolution form on the Finance Committee.
So we're going to, so you're saying...
We may discuss things, as Mr. President said, multiple things, but they need to appear in resolution form on the appropriate agenda, so they move through summary notes and then to the board, appropriate spot on the board agenda.
I said my question would be, if we discuss the administration, we think there's a problem, does that stop, if the finance met, and already just a resolution, and the construction people say you don't have to, I would like to see a system that notes before it goes to finance for that resolution, that from the chairman of administration...
We just started, but to reiterate, that's why we have standing meetings, so that we actually move through the month and the information flows. In board briefing on Friday, you'll receive any agendas for the upcoming week, so you can already start asking those questions. When summary notes come out following board briefing, which will include those discussions, questions can then continue, of course, and all of those, that information should inform Finance Committee meeting, which happens the last of our...
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Collier, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes, on all, except for Finance Resolution Number One, I'm going to abstain on, for lack of a better way of doing this, checks numbers zero eight six nine four two, zero eight six nine four four, zero eight six nine four five, zero eight six nine five zero, and zero eight seven zero six four, for the reason that I felt like I didn't have enough information on which to render votes on all of them. Because I predate, I suppose I predate on time on the board.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Calera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazado?
Yes, all except for Resolution Number One and I abstain on zero eight seven one two zero.
Mr. Cookham?
Yes. Mr. Kazinsky, we move Personnel Resolution Number One.
I'm sorry, I'm skipping on my vote, maybe.
Mr. Kazin, Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, would you like to...
Should you move Personal Resolution Number One through thirteen?
Absolutely, I move Resolution Number One through thirteen, and that's all we're going to do.
Second.
Collier, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Calera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazado?
Yes.
Mr. Cookham?
Yes. Hearing of the citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, this portion shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Excuse me. Sorry.
Okay. We have an amendment, and we'll call it Number Eighteen, I believe. Number Eighteen of the Finance Acceptance of Donation, as written.
Sir. I think we have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Tim McGarty, forty-three Brown Street, Nutley. I'm the treasurer for the Nutley Educational Foundation, and I'm proud to present a check for three thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars to the Rattcliff Schools for another smart board. The foundation is supporting adult education, special young adults, as well as opportunities like this to support the Nutley educational system.
Thank you. Thank you.
What was that amount on that check, please?
Three thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Okay, we'll amend the resolution. So three thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars.
I also publicly want to say thank you. It's great to work with organizations that their one goal, their one specific goal is the betterment of all of our children. So thank you for all that you do for our kids.
Collier, on the amended resolution.
I'll be passed there, and then...
I'll read it again. Resolution Number Eighteen, acceptance of donation in the amount of three thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars for smart boards for the Little Learners Program. And someone said it?
Sir.
Okay. Charlie said it.
Okay. Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Yes. Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Calera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazado?
Yes.
Mr. Cookham?
Yes. Apologize for the... Hearing of the citizens. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, this portion shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always, state your name and address each and every time you address the board, with the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Beginning President, I'm the Superintendent and the Board of Education Members. My name is Sharon Baza. I live in Nutley, sixty-eight Great Street, and my statement is a lot shorter this time than when I was here back in July. And it just says that I stood before you to make my presentation concerning the idea of school uniforms. As I've stated in the past, this topic has come to the table on several occasions, but for some reason, because of the district's other pressing matters, it has always taken a back burner. I listened carefully, and I heard that uniforms were discussed by Mr. Kazinsky tonight. I wasn't contacted whether or not that's a policy or not, but I would have liked to maybe have known about that. At this time, I am here to ask that we actually start this discussion, and we end it with a solution finally. Since my last visit here, I had had many, many parents contact me in hopes that I continue this endeavor. As you look around this room, I can only hope you see what I say. The parents of today's students gathered before you to show their support in bringing uniforms to our school district. And if I could ask, if you're here for uniforms, can you clap? Just give it up. This is just a few people. Okay? I tried to carefully explain the benefits of uniforms in my last presentation, and I did get feedback on the negative side from some. The biggest issue was their child's freedom of expression. Once again, I ask you, why does a child's school attire have to be the only reflection of their expression? Because that's what these parents need to be. Creativity is what expresses all of us, not just children, but adults as well. At this time, I would like to know if any further discussion, true discussion, will come amongst this board to bring this topic up to the front burner and make a clear and conscious decision of how the township can make this happen. If it means petitions, I'll be happy to step forward. If it means polls amongst the schools and the parents, I'll be happy to be a part of that. Again, this has been put on the back burner in the past. I don't plan on stopping. I just want you to know. I will be at a lot of meetings. I will be visiting you at school. I have one child at this school. She is in high school, and I'm hoping by her sophomore year, uniforms are instituted. So that gives me, what, ten months? So get ready, guys, because I'm coming at you. All right? And your parents behind me, and hopefully, let me know if someone could email me, if somebody could call me. I'll be happy to call you, and, or, Mr. President, I'll be happy to be in touch with you. And hopefully, we can do this as a team, because this certainly is going to require teamwork. Thank you.
In this comments, as committee report said that it is something that the committee will be addressing, and who will get... Yes?
Kimberly Donahue, twenty-seven Rainham Avenue. Before I comment on the school uniforms, the last time I was here, the board members who are here from the last time, I'd like to thank you for listening to us with regard to the aides for the school. Everybody was here, and you guys listened. When you're talking about the New Jersey ASZ test and the standardized tester, I said to you, my son was doing so well, and part of the reason he was doing so well was because the way he's treated in the schools and the way the aides are. Just got my son's pass test, advanced proficient in two academic things. He's been a great teacher since the Rattcliff program started with Mr. Carney, and he's doing great. Moving on to the school uniforms. We need to move forward with treating all of the children equally and standing united in that everybody deserves the same education, and everybody is equal in schools, so that the children treat each other equally, and we empower our teachers to not have to be the babysitters of what children are wearing. Give the teachers back the power to teach in the classroom. Less distraction for the kids is also less distraction for those teachers. They can focus on the business at hand, which is teaching the children. But one, and I agree with everything that everybody's raised, one thing that maybe some of you haven't thought of, I've talked to some of the other special needs parents, I can't say I represent all of them, a couple of us had a very lively discussion about school uniforms at lunchtime today, but I have to say, I think that with our special needs community growing as it has, and the number of children you have coming through and coming up to the middle school and high school level, you just opened the autism program up for the middle school level, I think that the uniforms will also help those children, because it will send a message that we're all equal. Everybody's in this school to learn together, all of us. I have regular red kids, and I have a special needs child, and I don't see where it could hurt anybody. The children have other ways to express themselves, and I just think that it's going to pull us better, pull us together better as a community, and it's going to show everybody what you guys started with the autism program up for the middle school level. guys started with the autism program, the special needs program. All the children are equal in everybody's size.
Good evening. Kevin Hussey, 33 month, Aradina. I just wanted to talk about school uniforms also briefly. I have the unique ability to see many of our students every day and listen in on their conversations, as I am the crossing guard on Franklin and Jessnut. Whether they know it or not, I hear and see a lot of things that are going on. I have to say, the newly, the HIB policy we put in town right now, it's going to come very close to being enacted, as I hear a lot of comments being made, not directly to students who might not be dressed as fancily as some of the other ones, but I do hear the comments made amongst the groups of kids, and I hope it doesn't get to the point where it has to form the bullying, intimidation, or harassment. Thanks for your time tonight.
Anyone else?
Daniel Boland, 53 Lakeside Drive. I do agree with the uniforms, by the way, but that's really not my focus tonight. I was just wondering, the status of the Special Ed Parent Advisory Group, did anything come to fruition? From what I understand, it's the academic committee that's going to be addressing this.
No, you're dead on in terms of your assessment last week, so we did bring that up in our discussion. I apologize that I was remiss in not making that comment, but that's, honestly, we're technically right now. He is very aware of the situation, and we are moving in that direction in terms of having that advisory group, so we appreciate your feedback. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, Mr. Lasting.
I communicate directly with our interim director of special services. That's something I knew you were lacking. These are things that I appreciate sometimes when they're brought up. Obviously, if required in code in my past districts we've had, it's not something that you turn over overnight. I did talk with Mr. Malco about making sure that we have a process in place and structure moving on that way.
Okay, that's true. And on a separate issue, I just have a quick question regarding the town tour of the schools, which I think is great. I was wondering, is that tour going to include the preschool disabled class and the autism programs as well?
Actually, as of right now, we've only started discussions. I'm muted at that. I know it's something that's been done traditionally here, and I want to look at everything as it comes up, so it'll be specifically included.
Okay, great. And one last thing, very quickly, it's completely separate, but I was just thinking regarding the open house, and I was wondering if maybe you guys would consider kind of changing the format to maybe having it occur prior to the commencement of the school year, almost more like a meet-the-teacher format whereby the students and the parents would have the opportunity to meet with the teachers and to see the classroom and to discuss the curriculum before the school starts, to help the children with transition into the classroom or the different school, which obviously would help reduce their anxiety. I think it would probably be especially beneficial to children who are entering into the middle school and the high schools. This may already be happening, I don't know. But just to expand on that and give you an example, my niece's school in Florida, what they do at the high school level is, the week before school, they have like a four-day camp. That camp is actually run by high schoolers who are in the booster club, and it's for the freshmen, and it gives them the experience of actually navigating the school, being in the classrooms, knowing where the cafeteria is, and they actually kind of take it to another level by kind of making it a little fun, but it's also academic-based by like touring colleges and things like that. So, I mean, I don't know if you guys do that already, but I just wanted to throw that idea out there.
Just so you know, by understanding again, we at the end of the year, the transition points, we do have a functionally rising sixth graders to the middle schools, so I get some experience of where to go in a four-day camp. But the other piece, I think you initially asked about parents coming in ahead of time. I know as far as the back-to-school, as part of it is, the teachers at that point have built a relationship with the kids, and they can talk to you about the specific kids at that point. We have teachers in their own rooms, and before the year, sometimes it's difficult. But as far as the transition to the building, my understanding, we definitely do that for the kids who are at the middle and the high school level now, and maybe that's something we've talked about for our upcoming parent night, you know, for the end of the year, so parents can at least feel they're going that summer. It's difficult sometimes before the year starts, because not every eye is dotted, not every T is crossed, and I have parents who make it meaningful. There's certain stuff that needs to be talked about.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Krista Sees, 51 Rainan Avenue. I would welcome being any part of the discussion about the teachers integrating the technology, because it is happening. Just today, I couldn't keep up. I was in four different classrooms trying to help the teachers who were already doing something 15 minutes preparing. And I think the board took a good step in the direction of helping the teachers by hiring another technician, because that helps keep the equipment up and running, because if the equipment's not running, then it's hard for the teachers to use it. And they are using the SMART Boards. Mr. Odell purchased a program, Stratologica, for the fifth grades, and they're using that to actually touch, feel, move maps, so that they can learn more about the geography. So there's more and more happening with the SMART Boards. Yes, there's more ways to do things, but we are in the right direction.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President, Alan Thomas again. Mr. President, there were several references, I think during the committee reports, to a new OPAC report.
It wasn't a new, I'm just, we were looking at next school year budget, where we may potentially, there are some outstanding ones that we don't know where we're going to wind up, so we have to be careful that we factor that in.
In fact, that was my next question. What is the status of our appeals on those things?
The, one is scheduled for summary judgment argument in October, later this month. One, we appealed it, but they have not responded because they're under staff down in Trenton. There were three, a total of three. The large one, which is the most concerned, which is $300,000 plus, that is scheduled before a judge. We've submitted all of discovery, we've submitted briefs, and we've asked him to make a decision in a summary matter, because we think it's a question of law and not a question of fact. Initially, that was not going to be what was agreed to. It has been agreed to by the judge in the federal court. So we would expect to be getting the decision on the large one. The others are still in the appeal process. We attempted to consolidate, didn't want to do that, we thought it might make sense. One is like $11,000 or something, but the big one is the 334.
Do you anticipate a...
Before the end of the year, I think we're going to get a determination on that.
Before the budget is presented next year?
When the budget starts, but it would be helpful. I think the timing may work. It's hard for me to predict that. It's gone a lot longer than it should have. The administrative law courts have a history of doing that. Give you a hearing date, and the next hearing date is three months later. They don't do it like a regular court where you set a date, you try it to conclusion. But we're working it, sir.
I appreciate that. And with that, what is the status of the court litigation with TRITAC?
Well, I think at this point in time, as you probably know that Judge Kennedy has been replaced, he has been, he was promoted, and the new judge, there was supposed to be a hearing on the 16th of September, but it's been deferred to sometime in October until she can review the files and bring, get a bit of speed on the case, so there's been no activity, you know, there's no action, activity going on.
Are you talking about pending motions?
Yes.
What motions are pending, can you tell me?
The summary at this point, basically to uphold the initial decision and to move us into a hearing to determine whether or not the settlement agreement, upon that hearing, if that actually happens, that we need, as an evidence based on the penalty findings, that there was not sufficient evidence to base Judge Kennedy's decision upon. We're waiting to make sure that that's done, we can move right to that hearing, and hopefully move back to town to budget fast enough.
For now, it's clear that the board has a motion that's pending. Is that right?
We do. Anyone else?
I would like to raise something that has always been a problem in my family. I find now that the special education department is growing, and the kids are coming up, and there are more and more children being brought in for special education that you consider, and I don't know, you know, the logistics of how it would work, but thinking about maybe having Radcliffe and Lincoln have their back-to-school night on a separate night from the other three schools, because every year, I'm forced to choose which child's school I'm going to go to. And unfortunately, my son Liam, last year, I was forced to kind of trick him by giving the teacher a note and letting him think I was there, so that he wouldn't be upset because I had to go to Spring Garden School. It's not always easy for special needs parents to get babysitters, and I know that babysitters are not the issue of the board, but I would like to be able to meet all of my children's teachers and go to all of their classrooms on the open house night like other parents get to. They go all to the same school, they go to their home school, they go all around the school, and they see all the stuff with the kids. It's not the same when you come in the next day and your child knows you weren't there. I had two sons who wanted me there for their open house at Spring Garden, and I couldn't be there because I had to go to Lincoln. I almost missed the whole thing, because my husband got home late from work, and we don't always have a babysitter. My son Liam is not always lending himself to a babysitter, and I was talking to another parent the other day who has the same issue, and I'm finding when we have our autism group meetings, our nap sack meetings, that you'll find that there are plenty of parents with that issue. And for me, sitting where I am, it seems the simple solution. If you put the Radcliffe and Spring Garden, I mean, the Radcliffe and Lincoln open house night on Wednesday, and the other three on Tuesday, that's going to eliminate the majority of your conflict for those parents who have kids in the special ed program and also have difficult children. Just a thought.
Thank you. Mr. President, obviously, we should let them know, we are also concerned about this, and we're looking to an updated calendar, just as much of a problem, and obviously, it's for your children, but as board members, for all our children, we have the same conflict. We want to make the meetings, and we can't do five meetings in one night, and it's been a concern of ours, and we've mentioned that Mr. Russo has been concerned about it for quite a while, and I think we're looking into updating our calendar so we can correct these problems also. It's a concern for the whole community.
Yeah, it's just a thought. I mean, I don't say that it's the perfect solution, but...
It's the same rationale for why we don't schedule elementary middle and high school at the same time. And it just, we talked about coordination at the O level, at the administrative level, something we definitely, if you make comments like that, it'll reinforce that effort to make sure...
I know, and somebody's always going to be left out or be unhappy, and it's not always going to work for 100% of the people. I realize that. That's just the nature of the statistics, but...
We can always listen and try and do better.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to clear into the background for tonight's meeting, something that I neglected earlier, and I'd be pleased if this conclusion, please, gets you all. This article was in the 7/26/11 Star Ledger. I made copies for everyone. It's called "This High." It's a federal analysis that shows the cost of raising a child last year increased 2% from 2009. In the little article right in the center, in New Jersey, the cost is estimated at $350,000 for a two-parent family earning between $57,600 to $99,730 a year. That's for a two-parent income. I'd like the board to know, I am a one-parent income, okay? I don't need to come close to making that. So I work about four jobs to keep my kids, you know, in their home, and that's a lot of money. So economically, I would like you to readdress the uniform issue, because the cost differential from buying the baby outfit, that's $100 for the shirt, where you can probably clothe the child for $125 a week and wash those clothes weekly, it really is a lot, it's expensive. So please, take the time to read this article as well. Thank you.
Erica Megan, 58 Rainan Avenue. With regards to the uniform, perhaps you can consider the safety aspect of it. I know I iron my daughter's clothes every night, I'm not there in the morning when she is dressed. If her outfit gets dirty, or whatever, she might spill something on it, my mom or my husband might need to change her. If something happens throughout the day, and, I don't know, maybe, any kind of issue, where I might get a phone call saying, you know, your daughter's missing, or whatever, what is she wearing? I'm going to say the outfit that I put out, and there's going to be lots of confusion. So, I work in an urban school district where the uniforms are in place, and every child looks the same. Parents come to school, when they drop their student, when they drop their kids off, they're wearing the same colored pants, they're wearing the top with the logo. It's just, it makes things a whole lot easier. And I agree with the gentleman earlier regarding the anti-bullying campaign, that the statewide campaign now, and it's really something that we're moving toward, and I don't think children should be subjected to that.
Thank you, Mr. President, Alan Thomas. Mr. President, I remember sixth grade, when my high school district eliminated its strict dress code. So, when they did that, that eliminated the distinction of abuse for boys, and we had a difference between school clothes and play clothes. So now we wear sneakers to school, and now we wear blue jeans to school, we could wear t-shirts, girls could wear pants or shorts, or even culottes, and so on. Remember that? Except for the stuff made calling, we couldn't wear nothing, and we couldn't wear, you know, derogatory statements and so on on the teachers. Anyway, I still have a few context of someone who thought that was great, not going to have the strict dress code. And I still think that is the way to go. Unless we can demonstrate, and this is where it's going to fall on our academic committee and our administration, to demonstrate that switching to uniforms, whatever it is, just tacky pants, pants, and a shirt, a collie shirt, will objectively, measurably, improve our academics, decrease in violence or bullying, or any of these other measurements, because I have been looking at this issue. When kids started shooting each other for bomber jackets and sneakers, I began thinking, well, maybe uniforms isn't such a bad idea, okay? But this has been going on, uniforms have been used in school districts across the country for many, many years, and I have yet to see an academic study, or even an adult study for one school, that demonstrates that switching to uniforms has a measurable improvement in any of these things that we're talking about here, all of which are admirable goals. But I just haven't been able to find them, so I hope that when the committee discusses this, these are the things they'll be on the look for, maybe they're there, I just haven't been able to find them, okay? And maybe the proponents have, know where these studies are, and they can direct the committee to them. But I don't think we should be adopting a school uniform policy just because we have trouble dressing our kids in normal. I just don't think that's enough of the justification to impose that on the rest of the school system. And just one thing, this is America. Our children are equal regardless of what they have on. And I think that's very important, that we need to know that. There was a time, and I'm sure Mr. Kocik there, and Senator Malco, Debbie, and really, Mr. Kaczynski, he's been around forever, knows that there was a time when special education children were absent from public schools. They simply weren't there, because none of them thought they were equal. And if anything has changed in our society in the last three years of my life, that is one thing, is the best thing about the change in our society, is that our children with different ability abilities, with different handicaps and so on, are no different than the rest of us. If we happen to be fortunate enough, we have our children, or what we think of us, okay? And it doesn't make a difference what any of us have on, we're all equal, not only under the law, but perhaps even... Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just because we say it doesn't make it so. Putting the kids in the school district does not necessarily in and of itself send a message that everybody is equal. And unfortunately, as a parent, I have to tell you that you have people on both sides of the fence, the people who believe the kids shouldn't be there. I don't want to relive the ugly Board, the ugly PTO meeting when the kids came to Radcliffe School, joined the community and all that. We're always going to have those people who are against certain things, and they have the right to have a voice and to stand up and say they're against something. But if the school district is for it, again, it sends a clear message that we're all equal. It empowers the teachers to tell the children that everybody is equal, and it gets us back to the business of learning without all of these other distractions. And as much as, you know, this gentleman is saying that he can't find any qualitative result that it's going to help, you also can't find any that it's going to hurt, and there are more arguments in favor of it than against it.
It's becoming a little redundant, I think, not that, it's good to have discussion or debate, but I think this is where it goes, and the committee has to take all these things into account. So I think we're going to close off the discussion on uniforms for tonight. Anyone who should be heard other than me?
May I say one thing about uniforms? I think the real problem with uniforms here in number is, is associated with urban districts, and they're considered a badge of dishonor. But let me point out, and I'm not advocating it, although I personally think it's a good idea, schools like Oak Knoll, St. Peter's Prep, Del Barton, what else can I think of? I think, and Seaton Hall Prep, they all have uniforms, or Quayside uniforms. They're certainly not urban districts, and they always thought that we kind of aspired that we liked the private schools because they were so good. Maybe this would help us move in that direction. I think it's something to consider.
I'll close this portion of the evening, see if anyone else coming forward. Any old business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Under all business. Under all business. I know we've discussed this in the past, I hope we're moving forward with our shared services meeting with the commissioners. I know we've had quite a discussion, I know that the mayor has put out some dates to try to get some board members and commissioners together. I know we're moving forward, I know we're moving towards that. My recommendation is, when we do have this meeting, which is, I think it's imperative that we have it as soon as we can, that we have an agenda going into that meeting from our side, and from the commissioners, commissioners there for the Board of Education. So let me go in there and come out there with some type of resolve. We're the funding board members here who don't know, including myself, exactly what services the town does give us, how they do help us, how we accommodate that sometimes. So I'd like to have, make sure we have a clear agenda when we come out there with the resolve, and then, as we've talked about, maybe breaking this down into certain committees once we have a public meeting going into a committee session, so that we can further discuss what really this community needs, is to share our services more, and I know you're a proponent of it, and we're looking forward. I just would encourage the board members, when we come up with some dates, try to fix your calendar so we can be there.
I think the finance committee, we've talked about that very thing, is that, you know, what are we providing, what is going on right now, and we need to know that. And I think just a certain amount of preparation, and I think, to me, the most important outcome of that meeting would be a process where we can systematically approach this thing and have subcommittees appointed to address particular areas. That's why I think it's so important we do our homework first, and that we do that operational review, and get that data to know where the opportunities are, so that then we can move forward in a sensible way.
Mr. Stiller?
I have two things, Mr. Christian. Number one is on shared services, and I just have to state that, you know, for many times, many board members accomplish both of our measures, meaning they always say, "We need to do it," and I've been hearing this for years, we haven't got any place. Since right here from April, I've asked Mr. Yen and Mrs. Zin to mention this twice, because we outsource our buses, and we have two commissioners with great corrages in this town, twice for figures, if not no, yeah. I will say I've written most of the lines of each one so once on it, so that since April, if we're really going to do that search, I have to support Mr. Kuzinski, but there are things that we don't have employees in, we're playing outside concern, and if we can save some money, of course, in the town, I still don't like myself even as a board member, I already have an offer request, can't find out that we paid how much payment for that contractor. There's got to be a light item someplace in the budget, so that's supporting Mr. Kuzinski.
And that's why, at the finance meeting, we talked about the importance of doing that alignment of the expenses, so we can understand where we're spending money and where we can go forward.
Okay. And number two is, I just want to speak about one thing that Mr. Kuzinski mentioned earlier before all over the blogs, talking about solar, but it's not a solar with a referendum or costly potential benefits, it's a power purchase agreement, where they get the panels installed for free, a company installs them for free, we cut our electric bill, allowing them to run on the SReds offering. So it doesn't cost a ton of, it's a rest, anybody can install, and we wind up cutting our electric bills in the school district. So it's totally different in the past, I just want to ensure before Mr. Kuzinski, we have a similar blogs that are...
It was good to hear your experience.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
Any others?
I think this is old, it's the Spring Garden Gym. I appreciated the updates. I would encourage everyone to use the website because it's our new principal, Principal Guardia had an update on there immediately regarding the Spring Garden Gym, which I have to be helping a parent in Spring Garden. But also, I didn't know Mr. Lassivich, or, I don't know if that was discussed at the committee meeting, but I don't know, if someone could just provide an update about the Spring Garden Gym, I know that a lot of people have been asking about it.
Unfortunately, it's put in the log chat with Architec, who is responsible for generally the extent to which the...
Why would you say we're not?
Sorry?
I was going to say, on the record, we're not responsible.
This was installed going back, and the issues that have come, Mr. Guardia's done a great job communicating with the staff, and also trying to use what space is available to us. The extent of the issue and exactly whose line is for the issue, we want to make sure we have all those symptoms spelled out before we attach with that. And that's our biggest challenge, is you really cannot take action until we know that that's where we are. We've actually engaged the attorney, our contract attorney, excuse me, in the issue to make sure that we're taking the appropriate steps of protecting the district and our resources before we actually move forward.
Do we have an idea of when this gym will be available for use?
Not in the...
Full use, I know we're using it.
Not in the foreseeable future, because as of right now, we're waiting for a response to our first legal fair. We had a conference call, Ms. Yeamons, Mr. Nicolet, Mr. Regan, myself, with Architec and our attorney, to kind of flesh out exactly what was going on. We've had written communication going back and forth with multiple parts at this point. There are too many moving parts right now. We have three different contractors that we're actually working with, and we're trying to figure out exactly what's going on. We ran tests on the route to Terminally, the tests were not run appropriately, so we're seeing to them to rerun appropriately, and based on those tests, hopefully, we'll be a little part of the two resolving the issue. It's a whole problem, it's frustrating, we want the floor there for our kids.
Any other old business?
Well, I was commenting, regarding shared services, and I agree with my colleagues, trustees, Kuzinski, Spiller, that it should no longer remain a lofty goal or a catchy campaign slogan. At this juncture, if I'm not mistaken, from our governance to class, it's actually mandatory that municipalities have to move in this direction, so I think it's incumbent upon the administrative and finance committees to move feverishly in this direction to get this issue resolved, and again, and press upon our commissioners that we need to take a tremendous step in that direction to get this resolved. Thank you.
With all due respect to that, they have put a questionnaire out with commissioners to try to find some dates, with their busy schedule, they're filling out, so they are just trying to pump up some dates.
To talk about that happening, I talked with the mayor, he's kind of running those. We have a number of dates that haven't been until November. Unfortunately, the good news is that we have touched on our individual queries, to not only talk about when we can meet, but also talk about what that agenda would be, so we have a number of targets that we need to address.
Try using a doodle pole, they're great. A doodle pole. You put out the dates and you see who is available, it works pretty.
Any new business?
I have a question. Do you have a grant firm, I think, or a retainer? Are there any grants in the world for now?
We don't have a grant firm.
We don't, that?
We do not.
We don't anymore, okay. Are we thinking about hiring one?
That might be a shared service if we...
Okay, we'll pull into that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other new business? If not, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJIS, a 10:412, now therefore be resolved, and the Board of Education will assess and close the second session at this time to discuss student and contractor specifically literature matters, if further resolved, results in discussion in public or... A subsequent meeting with the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters in such a session no longer exists, so move. It's a favor?